Recording in progress.
Welcome everyone to the January 6, 2025, City Council Meeting, the first City Council Meeting of the new year. Before we get started, on behalf of myself and my three other new colleagues, I wanted to offer a hearty thank you to Councilmembers Palmer, Councilmember Wall, Councilmember Keen, and Mayor Norton for welcoming us to the dais, and also to Administrator Zelms and all of our city teammates. Thank you for your extensive orientation and responsiveness as we four drank from the proverbial fire hose. I have renewed respect for the expertise and professionalism of everyone here and really looking forward to the next year as we work together on behalf of the citizens of Rochester. So with that, we begin every meeting with our open comment period. This is an opportunity on our agenda for the members of the public to speak on items that are not on our agenda tonight as an agenda item. Each person has up to two minutes to speak for a total of 20 minutes. I will be keeping track of time through a variety of methods, including this stoplight here. So please know if I need to cut you off because of the time limit, that is because we want to make sure that others have an opportunity to speak. And I'd also request that each speaker be concise to allow more time for others to speak during the designated time. And participants are further encouraged to limit comments generally to topics that are within the scope and jurisdiction of the council's ability to affect policy. Councilmembers and staff do not respond to your comments during public comment, but will instead follow up with any specific requests separately. If you have materials to share with the council, you may give them to our city clerk, Kelly Geisler, who is sitting to my right to distribute. You're invited to speak in the order that you signed up, and I believe Christian had given me the sign-in sheet. So with that, we will hear from Molly Dennis.
Thank you so much. Greetings.
And Molly, we all know you, but if you can restate your name, we would appreciate it.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I am Molly Dennis. I'm a mother, a volunteer, a citizen of Rochester who has lived and loved Rochester through almost a decade, a couple decades now. I just wanted to say I received, I didn't bring it with me, actually my vehicle, a letter, a certified letter from Dan Doring, who threatened legal action if I came to speak.
Ms. Dennis, you're not to identify others in the community. Your public comment, it should be addressed to public issues and not personal issues.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought silencing a citizen. Okay. I'm sorry. I received a certified letter from someone on the city council threatening legal action if I came to speak at the council tonight, but I believe that this is fear mongering and intimidation. So I'm going to show up and I showed up to speak here. Two minutes is not long enough time, so I will post things on my Facebook Community Advocate page after this if I'm not able to speak for the length of time needed. The city of Rochester, I believe, is systematically silencing resident voices on social media, which I believe is wrong. I believe that eliminating virtual public comment by denying people who are like in nursing homes, who are disabled, who lack transportation to come speak like I am right now, is wrong. So I hope that the new council will address these two issues of denying open comment and media, social media comments, and restate those for public transparency and voices. I just, I do want to congratulate everyone.
If you can please wrap up. Thank you.
Okay. I feel like some of my time was taken by.
Just wrap up, please.
Clarifying. Okay. Well, I'll skip the congratulations. I do, I do want to say that some of my work, of course, on the city council was cut short due to.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. Thank you. We're moving on to the next speaker. Our next speaker is Barry Skolnick.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Barry Skolnick. I just wanted to mention three quick points, and hopefully someone can follow up with a letter about each of them. One of them is I'd like, on the UGC, to have an index on it because I've heard a number of people having trouble finding things. And while Ryan is wonderful in knowing where everything is, I would like it so that people, if they want to look for something specifically, they would have an index. I know there's a table of contents, but it isn't detailed enough. I would like an index. It isn't, I don't think it'd be that hard to do. Maybe even artificial intelligence or something could do it, but something where we could just look for things quickly. That's easy to use. Okay, so that's number one. Number two, I'm hoping we can get something about Peace Plaza, the bricks, about the plan, so that within the next month at least, we should be able to get something about what they're going to do to fix the brick so people don't have tripping accidents there. And then lastly, I really want there to be some specifics on the pedestrian access to the, all the streets in the downtown, especially around Second Avenue and Sixth, Second Street and Sixth Avenue, where there's going to be tunnels. And there's going to be, around the Baldwin Building, there's going to be a lot of construction. There's already construction around the Mayo and Gonda Building. We need something about exactly which streets pedestrians can walk down. This is going to happen sooner rather than later when they're going to start this construction. So we really need this plan now. So I'm hoping somebody can get back to me showing the pedestrian available routes for the next three or four months in that area, in the downtown. Thank you.
There you go.
I said I wasn't close.
Our next speaker is John, and I can't read your last name. John Kresel. There we go. I will learn to know your writing, Mr. Kresel.
Careful what you wish for. John Kresel, congratulations to you, Mr. President, and the new members of the council. I'm sure you will find it challenging and rewarding, working with cohorts there that are part of your team, along with our mayor and city staff. So congratulations. We have a democracy. At a recent city council meeting, Cindy Stanhouser, in response to a question from the council, said, "There was no money in the budget to continue next year with awarding downtown facade improvement grants via the Rochester Downtown Alliance." This was in addition to monies available through the DMC. However, at the HPC meeting, Molly Patterson-Lundy said in the presence of Irene Woodward that Cindy was incorrect. I request a written answer from either city administrator or city council president regarding whether the RDA will be able to continue the popular facade improvement grants with new awards this next year, ideally by the end of the month. Along with what Barry had to say relative to the many of the pavers, I'm also requesting that more signage is put in the areas. If some of you have not been down there recently on the west side of Wells Fargo, I'm appalled that there are not additional signage down there. Now, I know that revenue dollars is always in short supply, but you're asking for more lawsuits coming forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kresel. Those are the only names that I have on the signup sheet. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public comment period? Seeing none, we will move on to our call to order and roll call. Clerk Geisler, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Fredericks.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Council President Schubring.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
Thank you. Moving on to our city administrators' report. Administrator Zelms, please go ahead with your report.
Thank you, Council President Schubring, work on that. And councilmembers, Mayor Norton, members of the public. So we're still in the season of newness, a new year, a newly elected body, new ideas. I also want to recognize another new face. Chief Mason Poehler is our new fire chief. He just started his first day today, so we welcome him here, support his service, and I'm also thankful, of course, for Chief Kurska's 30 years of service, most recently as fire chief, which will continue until the last day he has here on January 17, and we will wish him well in his next endeavors. But it's also a great time to look back on our accomplishments in 2024. So I typically start each administrator's report thanking our teammates for acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in mind. They also do so in a spirit of innovation, compassion, and teamwork. The 2024 Year in Review video helps to showcase a small bit of their commitment to this wonderful city, its residents, visitors, businesses, and all across our community. So I also want to thank all the teammates who assisted with the video, including in particular Liz Goss, who had the pleasure of pulling it all together and making a turnout so fabulous. So with that, I would ask Deputy Clerk Kessel to play the video.
Welcome to Rochester, Minnesota, a city where innovation blends with compassion and progress is driven through collaboration. In 2024, we made strides in collectively delivering services and meeting the needs of Rochester residents, businesses, and visitors. Guided by our foundational principles and strategic priorities, these achievements reflect our dedication to creating a better future for all in our community.
Rochester continues to prioritize the responsible use of resources. In 2024, we focused on infrastructure improvements that enhance daily life while planning for the future. Rochester's record-breaking construction permit valuation of over $830 million in 2024 is a testament to its robust economic growth and efficient management of development projects. It underscores the city's proactive approach to fostering a thriving, well-planned community. The work we've done this year lays the foundation for bold transformation in the coming years and well into Rochester's future.
This year, we enhanced power reliability with commissioning of the Marion Road substation, and RPU added a new well to bolster water supply, improving infrastructure for future growth. In 2024, the Parks and Recreation Department utilized 2020 Parks referendum funding to deliver transformative projects like Soldier's Field Park upgrades, expanded with $15.25 million in external funding. Silver Lake Park improvements informed by community input will preserve its pool and receive enhanced recreational spaces. Neighborhood parks, including Slatterly and Allendale, receive strategic upgrades to meet growing demand. These efforts reflect Rochester's commitment to maximizing resources for vibrant public spaces.
In 2024, Rochester's parking rate study expanded beyond pricing to include a comprehensive strategy. This led to updates in branding, signage, a new mission statement, website improvements, stakeholder engagement, and adjustments to on-street meter time limits. These changes enhance the parking system's efficiency and user experience. Collaborating across departments allowed us to maximize efficiency, ensuring projects delivered long-term value. A few examples of those collaborative projects include repaving alleys and reconstructing pedestrian crossing ramps in underserved neighborhoods, road maintenance at Rochester International Airport, and infrastructure improvements at the Rochester Public Utilities Warehouse.
This year, Rochester demonstrated fiscal responsibility with a citywide mailer created through strategic departmental collaboration. The project provided residents with key updates while optimizing resources and reducing costs. Look out for the next edition in summer 2025. In 2024, the Flock internship program continued to thrive, engaging young adults in meaningful city projects while fostering interest in local government careers. By contributing fresh perspectives and supporting key initiatives, interns enhance the sustainability of city services while gaining valuable insights into civic leadership.
This year, Rochester reaffirmed its commitment to a sustainable future. Advancements like securing $87 million in critical funding to advance the Link Bus Rapid Transit Project, including the integration of electric buses, exemplify Rochester's commitment to urban sustainability, blending innovative transportation solutions with environmental stewardship to drive progress towards a greener future. Relationships with our state and federal representatives help to ensure investment in not only Link, but also a new roundabout, North Broadway Park and Ride, Trail Connections, and a new Parks Maintenance Facility that will bring Parks and Public Works together.
Rochester Public Utilities once again demonstrated their commitment to clean energy on the national stage, earning the Smart Energy Provider designation, a testament to our commitment to energy efficiency and sustainability. Our work with renewable energy and sustainable infrastructure ensures we are meeting climate goals while fostering a cleaner, healthier environment. This year, the water reclamation plant treated over 4.5 billion gallons of wastewater and met 100% compliance with federal standards. We also broke ground on major improvements for the plant, made possible by state and federal funding. The improvements are expected to result in an estimated $400,000 in energy and chemical savings annually.
In 2024, Rochester led with environmental innovation by launching the inaugural Snow Summit, equipping residents with tools and information to prepare for winter in a sustainable way, and by once again participating in the Little Bit Better Initiative, uniting the community to tackle waste and showcase the power of collective action. These initiatives not only reduce emissions, but also position Rochester as a leader in environmental innovation.
Public safety remains a cornerstone of our mission. In 2024, we enhance safety in Rochester with proactive prevention, strengthened emergency preparedness through large-scale exercises, and expanded our team of first responders with the goal of better reflecting the diversity in our community. This was the second year the Rochester Police Department implemented a downtown Summer Safe Zone initiative, providing a visible police presence and opening a substation downtown, resulting in a peaceful and secure summer season.
In 2024, the Rochester Fire Department continued breaking barriers and inspiring future generations through initiatives like the annual Women's Fire Expo, providing women and girls the hands-on opportunity to experience the demands and rewards of a firefighting career, promoting inclusivity and challenging traditional perceptions of the profession. Community engagement has been key to these successes. Programs like Safe City Nights, Night to Unite, and other partnerships with local organizations build trust and create connections, ensuring Rochester is not just safer, but also stronger together.
In Rochester, equity and compassion guide what we do. In 2024, Rochester made significant strides in addressing housing challenges with innovative programs and partnerships. The homeownership creation program supported the development of over 250 new attainable for-sale housing units, while Prairie Ridge received $4 million to create more than 200 homes by 2027. Tax increment financing funded projects like Valley High Flats 2 and supported future developments, including Civic Center North Lots. Collaborating with local housing partners and leveraging $50 million from the renewed local sales tax, the city is building a sustainable foundation for equitable homeownership and housing solutions.
This year, we piloted the Community Connector Program, bridging gaps for Spanish and Somali-speaking residents, ensuring all voices are heard. Rochester Public Transit launched RPT GO this year, an innovative microtransit pilot program designed to provide on-demand, flexible, and accessible transportation options for residents in southeast Rochester. Despite their smaller size, the vehicles are fully ADA accessible, ensuring all residents, including those with mobility challenges, can utilize this service. This program enhances public transit accessibility for those facing challenges with traditional routes, reinforcing our goal to build a more connected and inclusive community.
In the later part of 2024, Rochester launched its 311 system, streamlining communication between residents and city services. This user-friendly platform empowers community members to report issues, access information, and stay connected with local government, enhancing transparency and responsiveness while fostering a stronger sense of community. Rochester Public Music brought the community together through 32 vibrant events, engaging over 20,000 residents and visitors while continuing its rebranding efforts to ensure its programs reflect and celebrate the diversity and creativity of our city, partnering with the Parks, Library, and Communications teams to continue to broaden the impact of the programming.
The Accessible Rec program expanded to offer inclusive summer camps and after-school care, enriching the lives of residents with disabilities. In 2024, the city council approved, and the Rochester Public Library launched a community driven study to reimagine opportunities for services and use of facilities. This initiative aims to meet the evolving needs of Rochester's diverse population, ensuring the library remains an inclusive and dynamic resource for all. We deepened our commitment to community through the Move With the Mayor initiative, which earned gold-level recognition for promoting mental health and physical activity.
Through collaborative projects like the Equity Alliance and Community Building Fund, we've empowered local efforts to celebrate diversity and address systemic inequities. Together, these initiatives create a stronger, more inclusive Rochester where every voice matters.
As we reflect on 2024, we extend our gratitude to the city council for their dedication and service throughout the year, helping guide Rochester toward a brighter future. Thank you to our outgoing council members for their service, and we offer a warm welcome to the new council members set to join us in 2025. Together, we look forward to shaping Rochester's next chapter.
We also recognize and appreciate Mayor Norton's visionary leadership through her Rochester Vision 2050 Initiative. This effort will garner valuable community insights to guide policies and investments for the next generation, ensuring Rochester continues to grow as a vibrant and inclusive city.
2024 has been a year of progress and purpose for the city of Rochester. From sustainability to safety, equity to fiscal responsibility, our city continues to lead with innovation and care. These accomplishments are a testament to what we can achieve together, and we look forward to building an even brighter future for all who call Rochester home. Thank you for being part of this journey as we move forward together.
Thank you for indulging the time.
Thank you, Administrator Zelms. A wonderful video. And we will now move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Norton, please go ahead.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And I got a sneak preview of the video, and it's just amazing what was accomplished in one year. And now we're starting the next one. So there's lots of work to do. I want to recap just an event that we had. Let's see if I can get this to work. No. There we go. Maybe I'm getting some help, but I'll take it. We held our third annual New Year's Eve Day, New Year's Eve Day event. It's a family-friendly event, and I think there's a quick video of that, too. And we'll see if we can do it quick. Those are just a couple highlights that Experience Rochester put together and published. And for those of you who were looking over the last couple years, we had about 4,000 people last year, 4,000 people the year before, and they believe we topped 6,000 this year. So this was a very successful free family event. It was something that the Mayo Civic Center staff pulled together, and they did a marvelous job. And with that's with the support of people in this community. But everybody had a great time, was just really pleased with how that went this year. So I thought I would mention that and thank Mayo Civic Center. I don't know if anyone's here from, there's Bill Von Banks. Thank you, Bill. It was, it was really a marvelous event. Everybody had a great time. Wanted to highlight that Friday is the State of the City address, and anyone can come. The, I think we've closed the breakfast, so you wouldn't be able to eat at this point, but the program starts at 7:30. It should last an hour or so. And it's at the Mayo Civic Center. The community is welcome. And I will just highlight a couple things over the past year, but the direction that we're going moving ahead. I'll give a little bit of a very quick preview of the Rochester visioning exercise. We don't have time to go into the whole program. We'll do that in February, but just share a little bit of the highlights of some things we learned from you, from the community, which is really exciting. So that'll be Friday. A reminder that the International Relations Committee is still hosting trips to both Germany and Japan. The dates are on here, and there's QR codes. We have brochures up in the office if anyone's interested. There can be some fundraising done. This is self-pay. The city is not paying for everyone to go, although we do have some scholarships for our youth through the Rochester Homestead County Youth Council. So we will be hosting some youth to attend this event. And just as a reminder, because some people have asked, this is a program that Mayor Chakizama started many, many years ago. And it was, I happened to be in Germany for a different purpose, but I went to our sister city and met our mayor there about three years ago now. And they have a huge, it looks like an animal skin of some sort on the wall that's signed by Mayor Chakizama that was the agreement that they made. So these relationships matter. It was fascinating to see that they're still honoring the city of Rochester in their city hall. So if you're interested, there's more information available. I also thought I would just mention, I will be going for a few days in two weeks for the U.S. Conference of Mayors event, and also that's an annual event that's held in Washington, DC. And then I will be speaking the day prior to that at the Mayor's Innovation Panel on advancing local wealth and opportunity, sharing some of the work we've been doing with trying to grow businesses, support businesses, and opportunities for everybody in our community to be successful. But that will be January 15 and the end of that week. So just thought I would mention that. And while I'm gone, I'm available by phone the entire time, but the new council president will be acting mayor for those few days that I'm gone. That's all I have.
Well, try to keep things quiet while you're away, Mayor. Moving on to Item E, which is our order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, Administrator Zelms?
Council President, I'm not aware of any changes.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Doring?
Seconded.
Seconded by, I'm sorry, Councilmember Doring, seconded by Councilmember Keen. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have two polled items. Councilmember Palmer, Keen, and Councilmember Miller are polling Item 5, and Councilmember Wall is polling Item F13. Are there any other polled items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will, those two items will be discussed under Reports and Recommendations as Items H2 and H3. If there are no others, I would invite a motion to approve and block Items F14, F6 through 12, and F14 through 23.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Miller.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Keen. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to our public hearings, we actually have six public hearings on our agenda this evening, and I will start with a brief introduction to public hearings. So we will start with a staff introduction on the presentation, and then we will go to the applicant if they're here, and they have up to 10 minutes to talk about the application. And then I will open the public hearing. As members of the public, you each. As members of the public, you each will have five minutes to address the council, and you will, as I did in open comment period, encourage you to keep your comments brief and concise. Then I will close the public hearing and invite the applicant up for five minutes to discuss any issues that may have come up during the public hearing. And then after that, I would invite council members to... I'm sorry, Councilmember Keen, Mayor Norton.
Excuse me, just a point of information. For those in the back of the room, we have some openings here up front because there's a lot of people standing that might want to sit down for the next six hearings. So if some of you are interested, there are seats now available up front. So you might want to do that. That was it.
Thank you, Mayor. So after the applicant, then council members will discuss... Will ask questions of the applicant and then entertain a motion. So with that, I am going to start with Item G1, which is a major land subdivision by Tedman and Lori Heim. And we have Anthony Cheeky here to introduce this item. Miss, go ahead, Mr. Cheeky.
Thank you, Council Presidents Schubring, Mayor Norton, City Council Members. I'm Anthony Cheeky with the Community Development Department. Before you, is application CD 2024-042-Plat by Tedman and Lori Heim to be known as Heim Edition for the subdivision of 8.54 acres into 11 residential lots and two outlots. The site is located southwest of the intersection of 25th Street Southwest and Elm Croft Drive Southwest and east of Highway 52 Southwest. The development review team recommends, and the planning commission unanimously forwarded a recommendation of approval with the seven conditions at the December 11th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeky. Is the applicant here, and do they wish to come forward? Please state your name, and you have 10 minutes to discuss your application.
Yes, my name is Tedman Heim. I'm the property owner and the person attempting to develop this. We really, I guess, unless somebody had a question, it's literally, it's land that's been in my family for a number of years. It's a rather large chunk of land for that area. So we are trying to divide it into the 11 lots. My house or my residence is on Lot 11. So it's 10 new residential builds for that area. But otherwise, I don't really have anything else except requests that I get approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heim. We'll call you back after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I will now open the public hearing, and I do have two members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item. So I will first call Brooke Hart forward to testify on this item.
Congrats, everybody.
Thank you.
I live on Meadow Run Drive, and so that's connected to 25th Street. I'm not sure if any of the members have ever drove on that road before, but it goes uphill, and it's very, very skinny on the uphill. It's not even two full lanes. My only concern, my husband's concern, is we are having more traffic. It's very dangerous. If you know you live there, you're going to scooch over when cars are coming the other direction, especially in the blind spots with the hills as it's dipping. It kind of... Again, there's a hill, and it goes down to kind of a valley where there's a river that goes through. Our concern is there can be more traffic. It's not safe. That road in itself, I don't know how it's legal. It's very skinny. So before it's approved, I guess, infrastructure is our biggest concern. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Yes.
Moving on to Ernest Han.
Hi, my name is Ernest Han. Good evening, council members. Congratulations to the new members, Mayor. My comments again are associated with the Heim addition. Similar to what we just heard, the access route to and from that planned development will heavily depend on 25th Street down to Highway 63, which is where the Kohl's and Walmart interchange is. The eastern portion of that street is very narrow, no sidewalks, not well-lit, similar to many of the roads in that area. These issues were brought up at the previous public hearings by many attendees, and the minutes from that meeting show it was acknowledged that the issues associated with using that road was a valid concern. Additional housing and traffic under that road will only make the situation more hazardous. If the roadway in its current state is a valid concern, it should be addressed before increasing traffic in that road or on that road. The public hearing minutes also indicate that the issues on 25th Street need to be addressed by the city council during... I'm sorry, by the city during future improvement projects. This seems like the time for the council to stipulate that this roadway is improved before additional housing is added. I'll also note that the issues on this road become more pronounced in the winter after snowfall, when the roads are plowed, and it makes the road even more narrow and more dangerous to drive on where cars meet each other. Beyond the issues on 25th Street itself, the intersection at Highway 63 does not well handle the current traffic. There's a three-way stop sign intersection just immediately prior to the stoplight at Highway 63. Only two cars, sometimes only one car, can typically queue up at that light unless they encroach on the crosswalk, and then you can get maybe three cars. The other cars, then, at the stop signs are forced to wait, and the cars can't get by them. It gets congested, and the stoplight, again, has a traffic light that's only about six seconds long, so you can maybe get three cars through there. In addition to that, the bigger issue this time of year on 25th Street, because there is a stop sign at the bottom of that hill, it's shaded, it gets very slippery. Many times, you get at that stop sign, and you are concerned about being rear-ended because the cars coming over the crest of the hill cannot see you stopped. And again, it's very slippery. The community development report for this project indicates that a traffic impact report waiver was completed and accepted by Public Works. I'm not sure how terminology is used for these reports, but the word "waiver" makes it sound like it was expedited without review, and that concerns me as well for all the issues that I just brought up. I would ask that the issues of traffic and pedestrian safety concerns be addressed before additional housing developments and associated traffic are added to that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Han. Are there any other members of the public who wish to be heard on this item? Anyone else wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and invite Mr. Heim back up to address any additional issues.
The... As the previous person was just indicating, there was a waiver of the traffic study because they've indicated that, according to that, that 10 new residential lots would not impact traffic enough to warrant a further study. Now, I completely understand because this land's been in my family for 35 years. I've driven that road a number of times. I do agree, there's been a lot of... Over the years, I've seen petitions, whatnot, to try to convince the city at the very bottom of 25th Street to widen that because it is, it goes from up where my property is, down 25th Street. It does narrow, but there are other accessways as well to get out of the development. Now, the quickest down to Broadway is 25th Street, and I do agree it is narrow, but it's been something that... It hasn't changed in all the years that my family's lived up there, that I've lived up there. But I agree with what people are complaining about, that the street narrows. Now, that is a ways down from my property, but clearly, I guess, construction traffic and stuff will go up and down that road. But I would note that there is on Elm Croft, which is... There's a lot being developed right now or dug right now, where I have had a lot of construction traffic. And that's literally the lot attaches to my property, the back of my property. And we've had dump trucks and stuff going in and out, and there hasn't been any incident. But I completely understand what people are complaining about because that's something neighbors and myself, because I got teenagers that then became drivers. So we've always worried about that road down there and how narrow it is compared to the rest of the road. So I understand the complaint. I just don't believe that 10 homes is gonna make a significant change enough to warrant, you know, further review. And I guess I would ask the city council to approve the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. Before you leave, are there any questions for Mr. Heim while he's up here? Seeing none, you can go back to your seat. Questions to staff from council members? Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to just have Public Works or just... I know we've talked about 25th Street before, from Broadway going west. No plan... I know it's a low-traffic volume, but just to talk about the topography and the other concerns?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, President, members of the council. 25th Street Southwest has definitely been on our long-range plan when we look at projects that we like to do. It's not made it into the six-year CIP yet. However, you know, it's... We understand that it's not how we would design a street today. It's 18 to 20 feet wide in the area that people are speaking about. So we always have that on our list. As some of you recall, when we did our payment management update and talked about sales tax money, we have about a $16 million to $20 million annual shortfall in being able to reconstruct and rehabilitate streets. The sales tax is bringing in about $3 million more per year. However, we still have the gap, so it's prioritizing and making this a project. I would envision it's going to get into our CIP as we begin to look at the upcoming two-year additional budget and CIP cycle here this spring.
Thank you. Do you have a feel for that, Carries? Is it like 2,000 trips a day, and we're going to add 100? Or can you give me a feel for what those sort of ratios are?
I don't have the existing traffic volume, but when we look at, you know, per lot trip generation, it's... The rule of thumb is 10 trips per day per lot, but that's actually starting to drop. So it's... We're thinking, you know, 80 to 100 additional trips per day. And to the point about the waiver, the traffic impact report waiver, probably 90% of the projects you'll see before you receive a waiver. It doesn't mean we're expediting and just passing it through. It means it doesn't trigger, trip the threshold for what warrants additional traffic study. So Sam, our traffic engineer, and myself look at each project. They need to submit that application for a waiver. If it trips the threshold, then we require a traffic study for our review. This project obviously did not.
Okay. One of the reasons I bring it up, though, is we've... I've talked to Public Works before about the street, and usually it's the low-volume traffic on there that keeps it from rising up your priority list.
Yes, and it's not on our state aid system, so we can't use state aid dollars to reconstruct the street. So the council has continued over the years to incrementally give us a little bit more for preservation and reconstruction projects. And like we've noted, the sales tax helps us hit other regional corridors. But, you know, this one is getting to the point where I would see it in our six-year CIP.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski. Thank you. Councilmember, any other questions on this item from council members? Seeing none, is there a motion on this side? Oh, Councilmember Miller.
Quick question. Related to the mention of alternative access that's not quite as direct to Broadway, I'd guess I'd ask Public Works as well, what other temporary strategies might be considered or worked with the neighborhood, whether that's neighborhood traffic management or considering how to encourage trips along those, the more adequate roadways to carry the volume that aren't subject to these same concerns?
Yeah, we do... For the council, we have our Neighborhood Traffic Management Program where with petition from... With 10 signatures, neighborhoods can petition for us to study issues within the neighborhood, and primarily that's around speeding and safety concerns. So that would be an option if people are seeing issues along, whether 25th or other streets within the neighborhood. Quite honestly, there's not a lot of great ways in and out of this neighborhood. You could go south on Oakridge Drive to 28th Street, but it's very similar. It's more rural in nature that funnels back to the signal at Broadway and 28th Street. There's some other parallel roadways that are new, more newly reconstructed, that were constructed to today's standards, Meadow Run Drive. But quite honestly, with those, if we start suggesting people use other streets, then we start getting calls from those neighborhoods. So yeah, this isn't... It's a challenging area.
Councilmember, were you going to make a motion, or are you...
A question.
A question?
Yeah.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, for Public Works, I noticed in the neighborhood information meetings there were different concerns about drainage and the topography in this area. Sort of, it's near the top of the hill. I'm assuming this, in the major land subdivision, we're not going to address that until further down in the process?
Correct. We would address that with, you know, our future reconstruction of the street to meet standards such as making sure we have pedestrian facilities, urban section with curb and gutter to collect runoff, and we'd look at any of those waterways as part of a project.
What I was looking for is the step where we're really going to do a stormwater plan. Is that in the final development plan, or where does that happen?
With this project? Are you referring to runoff from this specific property?
Yeah, when I'm dealing... When I'm looking at the neighborhood information meetings, those things were coming up, but I don't think they get addressed at this point in the process.
Correct. As they would begin working on their grading plan and stormwater management plan, that is when we would address all of those issues.
And again, I was looking for which step in the process that is. Is that... Again, I'm trying to look up the map here as far as the steps. We were in a major land subdivision. Would that be when there's a...
Councilmember Keen, it looks like Ms. Woodward may have an answer for you.
It is prior to the final plat. So this will come back before, before the final plat, those conditions, and that is listed in one of the seven conditions for this.
Very good. I was looking at the... That's what I was looking up in the... That's quasi-judicial, which means it comes back to here.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. With the concerns expressed about slipperiness and accidents, is there record of any extra accidents that happen at that stop sign?
I'm not aware of this being a high-volume crash corridor, but we can look into that as far as if there's concerns about, you know, the steepness of that roadway and the profile coming into the intersection. Our maintenance team is pretty good about identifying those areas in the community and getting out and making certain that they address those with storm events. But we'll remind them of this location and just ensure that they are checking in on this one, and it's on their radar.
And there's not much we can do with the traffic light to create a little bit more buffer for the people going east?
Ideally, Broadway, we did a corridor study in 2015, and it addressed the turnback portion that used to be Highway 63 when Minda turned it back to the city. And that was from 28th Street South all the way up to 37th Street North. It excluded the downtown portion of Broadway. I would envision as this gets on to, you know, a future reconstruction of South Broadway, that's where we can really clean up the intersections and understand how we can improve intersection control at each one of those. And the struggle is we have these sort of frontage roads that were constructed decades ago, and it leaves no distance between the signal and the neighboring access points. So not how we would necessarily design it today, but something we have to deal with going forward.
Any other questions from council members? Seeing none, is there a motion on this item? Councilmember Palmer?
Yeah, I made the motion to adopt the resolution approving the major land subdivision, number CD 2024-042-Plat.
Second.
A motion made by Councilmember Palmer and seconded by Councilmember Keen. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sigh... I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to make a point of order. Just for completeness, we should say seven conditions.
Yes, I would add the seven to conditions.
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment to the motion? Thank you, Councilmember Palmer, and thank you, Councilmember Keen. We will begin again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Council president Schubring.
Uh go ahead.
Apologies for interrupting. If everyone could remember to turn their mics on when you're voting or speaking, that would be great. Thank you.
Moving on to our second public hearing, which is a zone change by Diamond Land Holdings LLC. And we will hear from uh uh community development staffer, Chase Patter. Mr. Patter, go ahead with this item.
Good evening, Council president Schubring, Mayor Norton, council members. I'm Chase Patter with the Community Development Department. Before you is CD twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three ZC by Diamond Land Holdings LLC. This is a two-point-three-nine acre site and is located southeast Rochester along Highway fourteen east. The Development Review Committee supports the request for a zone change from the mixed-use street-oriented or MXS to mixed-use center or MXC as it is consistent with the underlying small employment development land use classified identified in the city's comprehensive plan. The current zoning district, MSS, is best utilized for properties that contribute to the vitality and health of the community by providing walking, biking, and transit access by supporting pedestrian-friendly uses. The subject property's location along Highway fourteen, a high-speed, high-frequency highway and without pedestrian facilities, makes an makes the MXS zoning district not the ideal classification and MXC more appropriate. A rezone to MXC contributes continues to allow for the gradual transition between the low-density residential uses to the south and the higher-classification roadway to the north with its industrial users. Many of the uses that are permitted in the MXC zoning district are also permitted in the MXS zoning district. However, a zone change to MXC would eliminate the dimensional standard requiring the front yard setback of a maximum of fifteen feet, which is unique to the MXS zoning district, which would encourage pedestrian activity. Considering the surrounding context and location, MXC is seen as a better designation for this particular site. The review team is recommending approval of this application, as is the planning commission. I am available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Patter. Uh is the applicant here? Uh please uh state your name. You have ten minutes to discuss your item.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Tyler Mannler. I'm with WSC Massey, the consultant for Diamond Land Holdings. Chase did a wonderful job summarizing this uh application and the reason we submitted submitted it and justification. Um I'll just highlight again, the the main point of the rezoning is to relieve the property of the dimensional standard that has a fifteen-foot maximum setback, so that would require that our our proposed structure be located very close to Highway fourteen. Just given the context of this site, again, it's it's not an appropriate dimensional standard to apply to the site. So MXC was the agreeable alternative that we reached with staff. So we appreciate the recommendation for approval and just want to let you know I'm here if you have any questions.
Great. We'll call you back after the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. This is a public hearing on this item. If there are members of the public who wish to be heard on this item, please step forward. Anyone who wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward. Seeing no one, I will uh close the public hearing and invite you back up to uh address any questions that maybe uh my colleagues have for you or anything else you would like to add.
No, I'm okay.
Questions for the applicant? Uh council member Keen, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, this is for staff more than for the applicant, but I'm looking at this street here. There's, you know, four or five properties. Was there any consideration to rezoning the area to MXC as opposed to just the one property?
Thank you, council member Keen. Uh right now, we're just looking at that one parcel uh as the that is where development would occur as the other sites are developed. Um but at a later time, if those applicants came forward, we would likely recommend or look into uh zone changing this also to be MXC.
Thank you.
Any other questions from uh council members? I have a question. I did uh watch the Planning and Zoning Commission uh report on this. And in your introduction, Mr. Patter, you talked about the difference uh with uh with MS MXS uh and MXC when it came to pedestrian and bicycle uh traffic. Can you can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Sure. So for the MXS zoning district, which is what is currently, um as Tyler had mentioned, the maximum setback is fifteen feet. So what we want to see in that zoning district is the building to be built within that front fifteen feet, which is unique. Um no other no other zoning districts have that. So it's really creating that pedestrian realm or that pedestrian area for um those activities to occur, whether it's biking, walking, um likely along a sidewalk or something similar. Uh and here along Highway fourteen, we don't have that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion on you? You can sit down again. Thank you, sir. Uh is there a motion on this item?
I'll I'll move a two-part motion here approving the zone change CD twenty twenty-four zero zero three ZC by Diamond Land Holdings, changing the zoning designation of approximately two-point-three-nine acres uh from MXS to MXC and Part Two directing the city attorney's office to prepare the ordinance for first reading.
Second. Moved by uh uh council member Keen and seconded by, was that you, council member?
Palmer.
Palmer, I'm sorry. Council member Palmer. Any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I'll I'll just say that again, I I always worry about this when we start with individual properties being changed just by the individual request. But realize when we went through the switch from B two or what they were before and before the UDC, we did a lot of this like making one thing, and I think we are finding there's places where this does make more sense. The setback from the residential on the backside of this actually is beneficial to the um residential that's close by these properties.
Thank you. Anything to add, council member? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item G three, which is a ma major land subdivision by Bigelow Homes. And we have our staff report by Desmond McGill. I uh just aside, I see my old gang over there from Planning and Zoning, so thank you all for being there. Uh so, Mr. McGill, go ahead.
Thank you, President Schubring. Um Mayor Norton, members of the council, good evening. My name is Desmond McGill with the Community Development Department. Uh this is a request for a major land subdivision preliminary plat for Harvest View Eighth. Uh this consists of thirty-seven single-family residential lots on approximately twelve acres in an R two low-density residential small lot zone district. Uh the site is located in northwest Rochester, north of Fifty-Fifth Street Northwest and east of Sixtieth Avenue. Uh this is the eighth phase of the Harvest View development. Uh a general development plan was approved for this development uh in two thousand and three, uh which was subsequently amended a few additional times. Uh the major land subdivision is consistent with the approved GDP and all amendments. Uh both the planning commission and the review development team is recommending approval of this application. Uh the Planning and Zoning Commission did unanimously recommend seven zero at their December eleventh meeting, twenty twenty-four. The the approval of this application subject to three conditions of approval. Um that concludes my presentation intro, and I'd be happy to answer any questions when needed.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. Uh is the applicant here to speak? Please come forward, state your name, and you have ten minutes.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is Kyle Scove. I'm with WHKS Consulting Engineer working for Bigelow Homes and representing them this evening. Uh we are in agreement with all three conditions and um look forward to approval. Um I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you. Uh this is a public hearing. Uh if you wish to be heard on this item, please step forward. To address the council, anyone who wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and invite Mr. Scove back up. And uh with any closing comments that you have?
I have nothing further.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing seeing none, you can have a seat. Any questions for staff? Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving major land subdivision number CD two zero two four zero three F zero three four P L A T by Bigelow Homes to be known as Harvest View Eighth subdivision with three conditions uh for the subdivision of eleven-point acres into thirty-seven single-family lots.
Moved by uh council member Doring.
Second.
Seconded by council member Wall. Council member Doring, anything to add? Council member Wall?
Yes, uh Bigelow Homes has really done a great job with a large area up there, providing a variety of housing options. I have been at many of the neighborhood information meetings, including this one. Uh the neighbors that show up, they're very happy with the product that's provided uh at the price points that Bigelow can provide, so I'm enthusiastically in support of this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed say uh nay. Passes unanimously. Moving on to item G four, which is a major land subdivision by Rovig and Rodriguez Investment Group. And we have our staff report from Mr. Elliot Mueller.
Good evening, uh council president, members of the council, uh mayor. My name is Elliot Mueller with Rochester Community Development, and I guess I would like to say what a coincidence that on your first meeting, the new council members all get to meet every single planner and the community development department.
And I must say, they are all great guys.
So I will be introducing um uh major land subdivision CD twenty twenty-four zero four one plat by Rong V and Rodriguez Investment Group LLC. The site uh for the application is located east of Eighteenth Avenue Southwest and north of the Bamber Ridge Fourth subdivision. Uh and the subdivision uh or the request tonight is to subdivide three-point-two acres of land into eight single-family residential lots. Uh this site was included in a previous growth management map amendment and annexation application in twenty twenty-two. Um it it was previously unincorporated land that was surrounded by the city, so that's why it was annexed. Uh the site will gain access, like I had said, from Eighteenth Avenue Southwest via private roadway, um and the eight lots will be served by a private cul-de-sac. Uh the Development Review Team recommends approval of this major land subdivision, and the Planning Commission uh has forwarded a recommendation of approval as well with seven conditions. Uh with that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Is there a uh representative of the applicant uh here to speak? You have ten minutes. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, council president Schubring, members of the council, Mayor Norton. Uh my name is Ryan Schonfelder with WSC Engineering with a consultant and owner's representative on this project. Um the property is zoned R one. We meet the um dimensional criteria of R one. The density is approximately two and a half units an acre, which is also consistent with the subdivisions to the north and south. Access is like Elliot said, from Eighteenth Avenue through a private road. The maintenance of that private road will be addressed in the development agreement. Additionally, with uh maintenance agreements that are um assigned to each of the eight lots, so that road is maintained. Also, the there's a house to the north of this private road that currently uses the driveway today. Usage of that road will remain throughout and after this development. Um water and sewer is available in close proximity to the site. Those will be utilized to serve the site. Um our clients agreeable to the seven conditions and we request approval.
Thank you. We'll call you back after the public hearing. Uh this is a public hearing. Any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward to address the council. Anyone who wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and invite the applicant back up. Or any closing comments?
I'm just available for any questions you guys have.
Uh council members, any questions for the applicant? Any questions for staff on this item? Council member Keen.
Uh yeah, I just wanted to I I went to the neighborhood information meeting, and this is supposed to be a private drive. Is that the decision of a development or is that a city recommendation that this be a private versus a city street?
Mr. Mueller, are you?
Uh I think I will defer to Mr. Dombrowski.
Mayor, president, members of the council, this was submitted as a private subdivision and proposed that way, and our team is supportive of that. Uh just the way it fits into the the lot they're proposing on as far as, you know, just the overall maintenance. There's a couple additional things that would be required if we were to create a public subdivision, so we were comfortable with it remaining private privately maintained and owned.
Okay. And again, the development representative makes the comment that we'll figure out how to maintain that that street in the development agreement. I assume if it's a private street, it'll be developed, it'll be maintained by private property?
Correct.
Okay, I just again, I did I hear that wrong, that again, it'll be we'll figure out how it's gonna be maintained in the development agreement? I don't know.
Well, the the development agreement would address the the owner's obligations and the city's obligations. And in this instance, they'd be obligated for the ongoing long-term maintenance and ownership of the facilities.
Okay. Um again, I'm I'm think I'm fine with a private street here. I'm just trying to understand the decisions that 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 is up to them. This is not a cul-de-sac rule here. There's not a the the distance from the other uh accesses to Eighteenth Avenue here. I I didn't know if there was anything else coming into play.
No, although maybe the applicant wants to speak on it as well.
I'm good with that.
Uh are you? Please go forward if you have something to add.
I'll just add one thing. The reason we went private road versus public is much of the land's east of us, which is owned by the city, is undevelopable due to topography. Um so it's really serving just these eight lots and the home to the north. That's why we opted for a private roadway.
Okay, yeah, again, I've been involved in the discussion with it. I I don't know if we would have supported it as a public street, but I'm trying to understand how those are made. And then there there is this idea that it's a private drive that only have eight homes on it. Does that is that um cause any sort of consternation when we start doing Eighteenth Avenue and the number of access points on and off?
As some of you know, we are currently planning for the Eighteenth Avenue Southwest reconstruction from Mayo Wood Road to Fortieth Street Southwest. This fits the access spacing, so as as we're looking at that project and planning for an additional open house and as we think about the geometry with with the roadways, lane configuration, intersection control, pedestrian and biking facilities, um you know, we'll take this into account. Uh we haven't landed on the final geometry yet with that project. That will come before you yet this year. Uh however, um looking at with this additional access, how do we make sure people safely can connect to the walking and biking facilities along the corridor that are being planned?
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion adopting a resolution approving major land subdivision number CD twenty twenty-four dash zero four one plat by Rong and Rodriguez Investment Group to be known as Ridstone Estates Eighth with seven conditions for the subdivision of three-point-two acres into eight single-family residential lots.
Moved by uh council member Miller.
I'll second.
Seconded by council member Fredericks. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to our fifth public hearing, which is a final plat by Mayo Clinic to be known as Rochester West Transit Village. And we have Mr. Mueller back up uh to present this item.
Again, evening, uh council president, mayor, members of the council, Elliot Mueller, Rochester Community Development. Um and I'll be introducing final plat CD twenty twenty-four zero four four plat by Mayo Clinic. The property in question is located northeast of the intersection of Country Club Road and Wimbledon Hills Drive, that intersection specifically at twenty ninety-five Country Club Road West. The request for this final plat is to subdivide fourteen-point-thirteen acres of land into three lots and four outlots for proposed public and private improvements for the future West Transit Village development. The site currently acts as a Mayo Clinic employee parking lot. Uh an approval of this final plat will allow for uh future construction to begin on the West Transit Village development. Uh and this plat is part of that larger um Link BRT uh transit line. Um the West Transit Village will act as the westernmost stop along the Link BRT line, and it will include a Mayo Clinic employees parking ramp, multifamily residential developments, as well as some commercial spaces. The final plat is consistent with the previously approved uh environmental assessment worksheet, general development plan, and major land subdivision. general development plan, and major land subdivision, and the development team is recommending approval with four conditions tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Is a representative for Mayo Clinic here to speak on this? Please state your name, and you have ten minutes.
Good evening, Council President Schubring, Mayor Norton, members of council. My name is Jason Scrimshaw, I'm with Kim Lee Horn here on behalf of the applicant. I want to thank Elliott for his review and presentation. I don't have anything to add to that, but I can be available for questions.
Thank you. We'll call you back after the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward and state your name. And you have five minutes.
Awesome. Adam Busby. Good afternoon, I want to welcome the new folks here. Hopefully y'all won't hear from me too much, but I guess my biggest concern with this project, and I want to make sure that we don't set our drivers up for failure with turning radius and that type of thing during this project. Think it, there's been some things that's been overlooked in the recent construction and past construction, and I want to make sure we don't set up our drivers for failure, even though it's designed for buses. Sometimes it gets the people that don't drive buses design, for a case in point, the bus shelters down by St. Mary's, across the street from St. Mary's, too close to the road. If you pull in wrong, you tag mirrors, break mirrors off buses. It's a hazard, we're just setting our drivers up for failure. The Broadway project, the bus shelters that went in down Broadway north, they're too close to the road. So those are the type of things, when we're designing these things, we need to make a conscious, be aware of those things. I don't want to set our drivers up for failure. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Busby. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward. Anyone who wishes to be heard on this item, please step forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and invite Mr. Scrimshaw to return to the podium with any final comments.
I don't have any additional comments.
Any questions for the applicant from council members? Seeing none, you can take a seat. Questions of staff, council members? Councilmember Keane?
Yeah, I guess just go to community development. Again, it's not a question, it's my question, but this is the final plat, so this is the last time this will come before us from now on, it's administrative and it'll get approved. What kind of concerns could I have that now that what happens tomorrow, that it would be something that, are there things that could happen that the public would be surprised by, or is this, we've had our pre-development meetings, we've had the other ones, I'm just concerned as I give the final approval here that I've, we've looked through everything, I don't know if there's any sort of high level security you can give me, or even warnings?
Yep, thank you, Councilmember Keane. So I will state that this is only creating three developer lots, and there will be four remainder outlots for future development. So it's just gearing up for that first site project.
No, good, good point, but as far as that, that means that first project, when it goes now towards what the design is, what the housing is, that does not come back here for any, any reason?
Correct, that will be administratively approved.
Okay, I'm comfortable with it, thank you.
Councilmember Keane, I will have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Muller.
Thank you. There will be a neighborhood information meeting for those applications, though.
Okay, all right, it's good to know, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve the resolution approving the final plat C D twenty twenty four dash zero zero four by Mayo Clinic to be known as Rochester West Transit Village with four conditions for the subdivision of fourteen point three acres into three lots and four outlots.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Keane and seconded by Councilmember Miller. Anything further? Councilmember Keane?
I guess the only thing I'd say, again, this is, we're being approving this for Mayo and doing their work here, but obviously the West Transit Village is bigger than just what Mayo is doing on their part, and I know the city's major involvement in the other pieces, but also Eon and the housing that'll wrap this, so we'll continue to watch this closely.
Councilmember Miller?
I'll just say, I appreciate the context, that future neighborhood information meetings will be forthcoming with other developments. That was a clear concern from the initial neighborhood information meeting, so thank you for making that that clear.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Passes unanimously, thank you very much. And we are now to our final public hearing here, which is a utility easement vacation by W S E Massey, and we have Mr. Peter, who is going to wrap us up on this stuff. Go ahead.
Good evening, Council President Schubring, Mayor Norton, council members, Jase Peter with Community Development. Before you is C D twenty twenty four dash zero zero nine V A C by W S E Massey. This property is located at the southeast intersection of Mayo Wood Road Southwest and Restoration Road Southwest, and the request is to vacate an existing ten foot wide utility easement that was originally dedicated in nineteen seventy four. The applicant has submitted a site development plan for a multifamily development on this parcel. During the site development plan review process, it was determined that the plans would include the construction over this easement, resulting in the need for a new utility easement dedication. R P U will be obtaining a public utility easement abutting the right-of-way, which they will use moving forward. With this, the existing utility easement is no longer needed. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Peter. Is there a representative from the applicant here? Welcome back, please restate your name, and you have ten minutes.
President Schubring, members of the council, Mayor Norton, Ian Ryan Schoenfelder. Just here for the applicant today. This is just an easement vacation to make room for the forty-eight lot Restoration Glen Affordable Housing Project. There's no utilities in that easement. We notified local utility companies that we were petitioning to vacate it. There is no utilities present, and like they mentioned, electrical will be along the road fringe, so I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please step forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and invite Mr. Short.
Schoenfelder.
Schoenfelder.
No other comments, just I'm available for your questions.
Any questions for Mr. Schoenfelder? Any questions for staff on this item? Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve, hold on just for a second, I want to make sure I get it right, to adopt a resolution approving the utility easement vacation number C D two zero two four zero zero nine V A C to vacate a ten foot wide public utility easement lying in the most northerly corner of Lot One, Block One, Minnesota Bible College Edition.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Doring and seconded by Councilmember Palmer. Any further comments? Mr. Doring, Mr. Palmer, any further comments, others? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to our reports and recommendations, we have H one, which is reconstruction of Seventeenth and a Half Street Northwest from Nineteenth Avenue Northwest to Twenty First Avenue Northwest, and we will have a presentation from public works staff, I believe Amy Brozsky, did I pronounce that right? Mr. Dombrowski, are you making the presentation?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Amy's lucky enough to be in warm Hawaii right now, so I'm going to be presenting this one tonight. Mayor, President, members of the council, before you tonight is the Seventeen and a Half Street Northwest Reconstruction Project from Nineteenth Avenue to Twenty First Avenue. We did a very similar project to this project. This project is on the north side of Sunset Terrace Elementary. We did a very similar project on the south side on Sixteen and a Half Street two years ago in twenty twenty three. The reason we bring it forward as a feasibility report, it's the first step in the special assessment process. Through the chapter four twenty nine statute with the state of Minnesota, we were able to collect special assessments from the abutting property owners. So per our assessment policy, we collect twenty, we take the total amount of the street items, so not the utilities, not the sidewalk, not, not any sort of streetscaping if we have plantings or trees. It's really the roadway items for reconstructing a street, so the curb and gutter, the pavement, the rock beneath the street, driveways, and as, and any grading that's needed to prep the street for construction. We'll get into much more detail around the assessments in future hearings, but tonight is really that first step in the process as we begin to bring the project forward. So we're looking for the adoption of the feasibility report, and then we will schedule the first project hearing following that special assessment project. So overall, Seventeen and a Half Street is aging roadway, you can see the pictures there, the pavement difference in coloration is because R P U has been, because R P U has been in the patch a number of times because they've had to dig it up and replace water main breaks. The ages of the utilities are sixty-five plus years old, so that's approaching the service life of a sanitary sewer and a water main. Storm sewer is just as old. The roadway isn't designed to our standards today, it will be narrowed by four feet. We've also worked with the school district at the intersection of Nineteenth Avenue and Seventeen and a Half Street. They have the crossing guard there. We've really had, heard from them, and they've had challenges with people not stopping for the crossing guard, going around them, just blowing through the intersection. So this project also gives us an opportunity to clean up the intersection by adding bump outs, so we can shorten the pedestrian crossing and limit the amount of time that a person is in the roadway crossing the street, and then you don't have that extra space where a car could try and maneuver around the crossing guard. So not only benefiting the school, but also anyone else out walking in the, in the community. So overall, full reconstruction project, curb to curb, all new utilities, and then that intersection improvement I mentioned, and as you, if, as you would adopt the feasibility report tonight and then schedule that next hearing, that's when we would start to get into more details around the assessment process and how people understand what those numbers look like and how they have opportunities to come before you and/or if they don't agree with them, they're allowed to contest. And so we're having an open house on January twenty first. We've invited the neighborhood to come, and that's where we will provide more project detail and get feedback from them to help inform the design of the project. But the plan is to finalize things this winter and move through the special assessment hearing process and construct the roadway in twenty twenty five. So with that, I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski. Questions from council members? Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. Does the school pay assessments on this as well?
They do. So when, looking back on that last project, the school paid approximately seventy percent of the assessment, so the assessments are based on property valuation. We take the total amount and we basically split up the pieces of pie based on property values. So if one of the properties is ten percent of all properties, they pay ten percent of the assessment. So the school district obviously is a higher value property, so a good chunk of the assessment will go towards the school district, but again, the neighboring properties will have assessments as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer?
I have a question. If, if the sewer line is, is past its useful life, is that what you said?
Yeah.
And ask cast iron?
I would imagine this one's clay.
In the report, it says it's cast iron.
The sanitary sewer or the water main?
The sanit, no, no, excuse me, the, the water. Okay. If, if those are deteriorated, and I walk the road, the road's not in bad shape in my opinion, why would we, I mean, if we're being driven by the utilities, why doesn't the utilities pick up the cost?
Well, the way we've laid out the assessment policy is the utility costs are paid by the utilities, the roadway costs are paid via assessment, and the city through, in this case, we're using our street reconstruction funding. If it were state aid route, we would have the option of using municipal state aid funds. So that's the way the assessment policy is written that's been adopted. We do, though, we, we, we build in a portion of that work that goes towards the utilities, so they are, I guess, funding a portion of it. We, we look at per our agreement with R P U, who's driving the project, the age, we have some formulas that help inform, so I guess I misspoke slightly, they do pay a portion of that city piece, the seventy-five percent of the street goes towards the utilities as well.
Because you're saying it's not to today's standards, but why it's not is because of the width of the road and pedestrian crossing and trying to make that easier for pedestrians. Is that correct?
That and the condition, it's, that's definitely not. I mean, you can see the deterioration that's occurred, not only the patches, but you can see the delamination of the pavement. It's, it's decades old, so again, it's due for reconstruction.
Well, the, the, okay. The reason for the patch, the reason for the patches is that R P U is doing them in, that, that's what's driving the, the condition.
Some of it, but you can see that picture on the right, that's not a patch, that's just pavement deterioration that's occurred over time.
But you can mill and overlay that.
You can, you can only do so many before it's time for reconstruct.
And when do you think the last time this was milled and overlaid?
I'd have to look that up.
But that, but it's not a schedule?
Correct. I would, without, you know, this one's probably in the twenty-year range already, so it's getting beyond what we normally like to do.
Councilmember, you completed your questions? Okay, we're going to move to Councilmember Keane.
All right, thank you. I know this area, we did the street, I believe, to the south of the school just in the last two years?
Twenty twenty three.
Okay, and can you talk about, like, I know we had the assessments there, we had the different back and forth, how did that come out? Did, were the assessments fairly close to projected?
Yeah. And we can get into more of that, however, I would like to acknowledge, that's a great question. So with the assessment, we will bring back at the, the project hearing what the total, well, we already have it here today, the total amount anticipated for assessments, and we cannot assess above what we adopt here. However, if the numbers come in lower, we get better bids, we can reduce the assessment, and in the case of Sixteen and a Half Street, we reduce the assessments from what the council and the neighborhood initially saw.
Okay, thank you. The other point, again, just to follow up on Councilmember Palmer's thing, there is a fairly complex process, I believe, that public works does with the utilities. Sometimes when, when public works or the street says the street's got to be redone, you don't want to do it and then not do the utilities. I think we refer to it as a complete streets policy, that once we're tearing it up for one reason or another, we try to do all the work, but there are some debates on how the cost sharing goes there, and again, I think we're as good as we can be right now, it may be time to reassess it at some point in the next couple of years.
Yeah, I would just say that the complete streets policy is more how we evaluate roadways for all users, and that's, that's our requirement, any project we're doing. You're talking more to like a dig once policy.
I'm sorry, I used the wrong thing, we dig once.
We've had that conversation, we don't have an official dig once policy, but yes, it makes sense if we're going to do a project, we like to work with our utility partners, evaluating both roadway and utility conditions, because we don't want to split projects up from an economy of scale, it costs more, think of the disruption to the neighborhood. So we like to identify and prioritize projects where it makes the most sense because both the utilities and the roadway are due for reconstruction, and we can do it all at once, then the roadway should last for the next fifty years with the preservation work we do, and the utilities even longer.
Yeah, and I believe some of those algorithms were reworked probably in the last five years, maybe a little longer?
Correct. It was twenty eighteen or nineteen when we worked through that cost share policy with R P U.
Thank you.
Mayor Norton?
Thank you. Sort of along the lines that we've just been talking. I guess as I'm looking at this street, significant work by R P U has already been done, and is there a way we can work to catch this before R P U has done numerous, a lot of those repairs? It looks like four already that I can see here. So we get ahead of it rather than coming in after they've already done the work, again, to that, that whole point of just dig once. So I'm, I'm looking at, and the question that I started with is, how is this street chosen compared to all the other streets in Rochester? You have some sort of priority method, we've talked about this years ago, but can you explain? Work has already been done on here, clearly, multiple times. This was then selected for more work. How did this rise above other areas? then selected for more work, how did this rise above other areas in the city?
RPU, our, our partners at RPU have what kind of a, a heat map, I would say, of priority projects around the community based on the ongoing maintenance they've had to do, mainly from water main breaks, so all these patches are emergency patches because the water main broke, and they didn't have a choice, they had to go back, dig it up, repair it, but really, that's just a Band-Aid, so this one continually, and it's, it has to do with the, the material pipe, it could be the construction, the soils it was built in, and then just the age. So they're constantly mapping out all their breaks to identify where do they have challenges, how do they get ahead of them with maintenance, um, projects, just like we're doing with, with our sanitary sewer, as we think about the crews out jetting and flushing and, and cleaning roots out of the sewer system so that we can try and extend the life of, of our utilities. It really comes down to, this one was number four, I think, on their list of, they've got about a running list of twenty-five project areas, so this is very high, and we worked with them, identified our other utility challenges, and it made sense.
And I appreciate that, and, and I guess I hadn't, as we've talked about road and sidewalk and curb replacement over the years, um, I hadn't realized that RPU would be, that their heat maps, their needs are, were driving some of the process, and I, I wasn't aware of that, so that's helpful to understand, and I appreciate that you're doing it and hopefully get ahead of it so they don't have to do this many repairs before we can get out there. Um, I did have a question then, you mentioned four feet of extra, you're gonna shrink this street by four feet, um, is that evenly split on both sides, um, do you put it, and I think I know the answer to why you wouldn't do this, but in some cities, they put an island down the center and, and plant trees and make it more of a parkway, um, how, where does that four feet go, and how do you distribute that and make those decisions?
In this instance, we'll, we'll keep the center line of the roadway in the same location, so each side of the street will, uh, receive two additional feet of boulevards, so that, that just helps with tree health, uh, snow storage, um, and it narrows the roadway and of course calms traffic. We still allow parking on each side with this project, parked cars are good traffic calming, um, so, so we don't have this neighborhood coming back petitioning to be in the neighborhood traffic management program because people are speeding on the roadway.
And I appreciate that, and I think, um, and just probably for the record, because we take calls from people all the time in our office about speeding on roads, narrowing roads slows traffic, and, and people don't, they want, they want, why are we having, why are we having narrow roads? Because it slows traffic. So I appreciate that. And the last question I had, as you mentioned, you have already done work in this vicinity around the school in the past, does the school district, or is this a surprise to them that they're gonna be assessed twice, or are they aware of this in advance and budget for it?
They're aware of it, and we've talked with them to make, when we were doing the last project on the south side, making them aware that we have the plans for Seventeen and a Half Street that will come forward at some point. We've also worked with them on some operational challenges with drop-off pickup, uh, along Seventeen and a Half Street, so, um, this'll continue to accommodate, you know, the school district and, and ourselves and our city needs, but, um, we collaborate with the school district quite frequently.
Wonderful, thank you.
Councilmember Miller?
Just a question about timing of the street repair, but for the water main issues, the sanitary sewer, how long might we otherwise expect before this street was considered end of life and reconstructed? Would we be paying, you know, these costs anyway?
This one, I guess I don't have the numbers mapped out in my head, but, you know, potentially we could've done another preservation project and spent money, um, and gotten ten to twelve to fifteen more years out of it, but at some point, um, it makes sense to do the reconstruction, and while we're digging it up to do the utilities, let's repair the street as well.
And, and just a question, thank you for that, uh, as far as coordination with the school, I, I would also guess you're working with the Safe Process Schools, uh, program in that they are currently in the process of putting together a Safe Process Schools plan for all elementary schools for the first time citywide, and so I would assume that they have some thoughts on particularly how this aligns and, and the ability to accelerate the, the reconstruction to a safer configuration, particularly for schoolchildren across the school from, and granted, there are a couple of safe, unsafe intersections in this vicinity, so I think it's an admirable project to, to, you know, win-win-win, right, utility improvements, street safety, and, and the school, so it's not so much a question, but I, I think it's a, a good project, and I'm glad to hear that there's intensive coordination with the schools.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Dorian?
Actually, Mayor Norton's last two questions addressed the questions I had, so I'm good.
All right, any other questions on this item from council members? Hearing none, is there a motion on this item? Councilmember Wall, it looks like, no?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion here.
Councilmember Keen?
Two-part motion here, uh, number one, accept the feasibility stop, study feasibility report for Seventeen and a Half Street Northwest reconstruction from Nineteenth Avenue Northwest to Twenty-first Avenue, RPU project number seven oh one three nine one one, uh, and it's a city project number J seventy-eight fifty-five, and then part two, adopt a resolution setting the public hearing for February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, for the reconstruction of Seventeen and a Half Street Northwest from Nineteenth Avenue to Twenty-first Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, moved by, uh, Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Miller, Councilmember Keen, anything else to add?
Yeah, I guess the one thing I will add, that, as we go through these reconstruction things, there is a set way we try to go about this, we don't decide this street will pay twenty-five percent, but the other ones will pay twenty percent. We try to have a consistent way of doing this and not vary from it each time because of unique aspects of it. Uh, I think it's important to know that even with these assessments, and the neighbors will be concerned with the assessments, the city side of this is paying about seventy-five percent of it, and that's sort of a, a policy we've set and try to follow, whether it's North Broadway or Seven, Sixteenth and a Half Street Residential, we try to have the same policy for whichever streets we're.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously, it is IC seven thirty-five, and our rules require a break, break between ninety minutes and an hundred and twenty minutes, and so we are going to take a break for, uh, five minutes and return at, uh, seven forty.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Items on our agenda here, so we're moving back to reports and recommendations. And we have H2, which is the former F5, the Rochester City Council annual appointments to various committees, boards, and commissions. This was polled by Councilmember Palmer, Keane, and Miller. And I understand Councilmember Keane would like to address this first.
Sure, yeah, I'll do that. And again, I'll just start out by, you know, again, I realize it's the council president's responsibility to recommend assignments, and I know Council President Schubruck has taken this very seriously. And I know this because he reached out to me and said, hey, there might be some concerns with this, the way I'm going about this, and do you have any input? And I do appreciate that you went about it that way and kind of opened it up and tried to make sure we're doing it. My reading is that Council President Schubring prioritized, like, bringing in new perspectives and the value of change over time and value of change with, as we said, a new council. I understand that, but in this case, I think the city is better served with more attention to stability and continuity going into 2025 on some of the appointments as we enter the new year. We've got a new council. And again, so based on that, I had some concerns with the recommendations. So I want to move approval of the assignments as presented in the packet with the following three changes. Number one, I would change Keane to Palmer for housing. I would change Miller to Keane for RPU. And lastly, I would change Palmer to Miller for outside agencies oversight. I do this with the idea, again, of bringing some stability to some of these longer-term things. Councilmember Palmer has served on this for the past couple of years. I've been on RPU for a while. I think over time, we will make changes in this, but I just took it as the best interest of the city right now to have more stability going into 2025 than to shake things up. So with that, I'll kind of, so I'm trying to make this motion. I would need a second to go on.
Well, can I point of order now, since you are making a motion to an item that I, as council president, has presented, shouldn't I have an opportunity before an alternative motion to talk about my process that I used to come up with the...
Sure. Point of order. Yeah, so the, and it's a good point, but we shouldn't even be talking about my motion until I get a second. But so I move to make the motion with changes. So can I do that, or should I not do that? Should we first just have the motion and then make an amendment?
Clerk Geisler?
Council President, council members, I mean, there's a number of ways that you could go about it. I think you amongst yourselves could collegially decide that you wanted to speak first. If we were speaking specifically by the rules, once someone says, I make a motion, if someone seconds it, then you move forward. You could then discuss your points at that time. So there's a number of paths you could take. And if you want me to provide more feedback than that, I can, but...
Thank you, Clerk Geisler. Councilmember Keane, would you extend me the opportunity to discuss the process that I used prior to making your motion?
Yeah, again, so let's, but I will portray it differently. I'm going to withdraw the motion, and then we'll start from there.
Thank you. I appreciate that, council member. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share with the council the process that I used to make the recommendations that you see in your packet today. I want you to know that this, I took this, my first responsibility as council president, very seriously. I also take the traditions of city council very seriously. As such, prior to consideration of any recommendations, I discussed with both my most recent predecessors in this role as council president, the process that they used to manage council appointments. As my predecessors have, I weighed three key factors in offering the recommendations that I put before you. First is the interest of you, my colleagues, the council members. Second is seniority on the council. And third, the value in rotating appointments to broaden the experience and knowledge across the council. Regarding the interests of council members, each of you ranked your preferences for committee and board appointments. From these rankings, three council members listed public utilities as their top choice, and two council members listed the amateur sports commission as their top choice. So we had five council members wanting two positions. As council president, I had to make some decisions as the charter and city ordinance says. And so that's the decisions that I made. In each council, and in the end, each council member is given either their first choice or their second choice among, along with other appointments. In regards to seniority or continuity, of the three most coveted appointments, I've recommended two of our experienced colleagues to two of the positions and one newly elected member to the other board. And so, and finally, to the point, third point, of really the tradition of rotating appointments on the Rochester City Council. And there is a tradition of rotating council appointments. What that does is it really broadens the scope of knowledge and experience across all seven of us. And if you are a former representative on one commission and one of your colleagues takes that role, you have an opportunity to be, one, a mentor to one of your colleagues that builds teamwork among the seven of us. It also gives the entire council as a whole the opportunity to share in your expertise and raise the dialogue here at the council dais. So I think taking those three components, really, the interests of the council members, seniority on the council, and the need to rotate that, those positions throughout the entire council. And I look at this year, 2025, we have four new council members here at this dais. That's over 50% of the council. I think that we should really be spreading those opportunities across the entire council. So with that, I ask you, as my colleagues, to support the list of recommendations that I made for your approval. With that, other questions or comments?
So I think one of us needs to get a motion on the floor to...
So I would make a motion to accept the appointments that were made by the council president.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I spoke and gave the, my rationale for that. And so I'll turn it to Councilmember Miller if he has any additional points to make.
Sure. Thanks for the opportunity. And I recognize this is a unique issue and not a public hearing. I've been thinking about it, though, in some ways, much like our legislative versus quasi-judicial framework for public hearings, in that the only things written about these appointments are really coming from the code of conduct, which is not up for review at this point, from the city charter, which only lists very narrow requirements. And I think it's a great point and a great opportunity to talk about any special considerations for each of these boards. I just question whether tonight is the appropriate time to do that and not in a review of our rules of procedure and code of conduct. I know that with the Housing Coalition, there's a unique provision that only a member who has served at least one year in elected office can be appointed to that per their bylaws. And so we have a unique situation there, but none of the others have any specific conditions, just that they come from the common council. And so I've been thinking a lot about this and struggling with exactly how to approach the framework, but I found some parallel to our public hearings and guidance on legislative versus quasi-judicial. And I would think that this would be a great opportunity to bring into a future study session, particularly in evaluating updates to our rules and code of conduct and how that might play in to additional guidance for how these appointments made. Because as I read it now, it just says the council president will provide a list of recommended appointments, taking into account a survey of council member preferences. And as I evaluate that, I see that that's what's been done, and I thank Council President Schubring for his diligence in this process.
Thank you. Other, Councilmember Palmer?
I'll call the question.
I'm, I, we, can I call the question until each council member has an opportunity to speak?
Well, we had a motion on the table.
And that's not the motion on the table right now. The motion on the table is to approve as projected, so.
So Councilmember Palmer, do you, do you want to speak to the...
Well, I find it interesting that, you know, the second thing that you, I said was seniority, and the first one was your choices. And my first choice was the RPU board. I've always had to be the, my first choice. So seniority-wise, we've always gone elected, and then the first ward and fifth ward would be second in seniority. And so, you know, if you're going to rotate it, that was not a good way to rotate it. And then asking the Housing Coalition to change their policy, which they didn't do, seems odd to me. And so I'll wait for Mr. Keane's motion to be made to...
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. Just to clarify, as I said, each of you council members have gotten either your first or second choice. And in your case, your second choice was the South Zumbro Watershed Joint Powers Board, and so my recommendation does put you on there. And I did say that I weighed three factors, not only seniority, but council preference and the need to rotate. So with that, and then the next point, I don't know if you, you were saying that we, that I asked the Housing Coalition to change their bylaws. I did not ask them to do that. Councilmember Keane?
Yeah, again, I think Councilmember Schubring has said what I did. I mean, I understand how Council President Schubruck went about this. I totally agree that he took it very seriously and went beyond trying to make sure, try to do it. But he also had these priorities of trying to bring in new perspectives in that. And again, in this case, I think our city is better served with more attention to continuity and these coming years. So there's a motion on the floor. I want to propose an amendment to the motion as it is and make the following three changes. Number one, change Keane to Palmer for housing, change Miller to Keane for RPU, and change Palmer to Miller for outside agencies oversight. And I'll wait for a second.
Second.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Councilmember Wall? Councilmember Keane, do you have...
Yeah, the only thing I would say to anybody trying to watch is this isn't like a debate about we didn't follow the rules. I, the rules have been followed. These are not hard and fast rules that, you know, there's, you've got to do something for one. That's not what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with sort of like taking all these competing different interests and values and trying to come up with a list here. And in this case, I have a slightly different set of values on what's important for the city. That's what we're dealing with here, and I think that's what I hope we can deal with and go forward.
Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. I highly value relationship building, the relationships that I have with those people who have worked with and for me for the past couple of years. And I really appreciated coming to know the four new members, especially over the onboarding process that was really well done. I'm excited about the work we can and we will do together. I also am one who values expertise. And I've noted over the last two years, the excellent information brought to us from RPU by Councilmember Keane and the experience that Councilmember Palmer has brought to housing. I support those two retaining their committee appointments to those bodies. That's not a devaluing of anybody else on the dais. If my own name were to be listed by RPU or housing, I would say, boy, I just think there are better representatives who can help lead us for the next couple of years, especially in RPU with them spending tens of millions of dollars, some continuity as we move forward to ensure that we do responsibly deal with energy in Rochester. I can't tell you how much I've learned from Councilmember Palmer about housing in the past two years. And I've had an opportunity to sit with him and with developers, and I know that he will continue to do that, whether he's on the Housing Coalition board or not, but he just brings a great expertise to that. So I support the motion, even as I support Mr. Schubring's real good intent to bring great leadership to the various committees for which we have responsibility on this board.
Thank you, council member. Other council members' comments? I would just reiterate that, as I said, I mean, we are a council that has four new voices on it, and I think we need to be responsive to the voters that voted last year and have fresh voices. And I truly believe that Councilmember Keane's valuable expertise on public utilities will still serve the council. It will serve a colleague that may take that seat after four years. And I value the many years of experience that Councilmember Palmer has in housing from his work as a city inspector on up through the, his representation on the Housing Coalition. And I believe he, as you said, Councilmember Wall, that Councilmember Palmer will always be serving up valuable information on housing issues and other issues. I think that it's important, though, as a council of seven, and, you know, I'm not here to rock the boat, but we are a boat of seven, and there are four new people in the boat, and it's going to shake a little bit. And so I think the opportunity to share in those opportunities and ability to share leadership, I think, is of value to the entire body. And to Councilmember Wall's point of building camaraderie between all of the seven of us. So with that, if there are no other comments, we will be taking a vote on the amended motion, the amendment?
Just as...
Just the amendment, which is an amendment that replaces Councilmember Palmer on the outside agency oversight committee with Councilmember Miller. It replaces the recommendation of Councilmember Miller on the public utilities board with Councilmember Keane, and it replaces the recommendation of Councilmember Keane on the Housing Coalition with Councilmember Palmer. Any further discussion on this?
A roll call, please.
Council, Clerk Geisler, can you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Keane?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Nay.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Doring?
Nay.
Council President Schubring?
Nay.
There are four ayes and three nays.
So the amendment has passed, and now we're at the point of the full recommendation, which is the recommendations that were presented in your packet with these three changes. Any further discussion? Councilmember Doring?
Yeah, if you could just provide me with a little clarification, President Schubring, about the alternate position on the Housing Coalition. It's a voluntary board, so how do you view that functioning?
Administrator Zalms, do you have some information? I know you have been in contact with the Housing Coalition.
Thank you, Council President, council member. Actually, I did have the good fortune of already having, beating up my calendar with Ms. Morris. And the way that the bylaws for that organization read, which is its own separate nonprofit organization, for the role, size, terms, and compensation, is that it will be comprised of up to three designated representatives of each partner member. For continuity and the necessity for staff expertise, governmental partner member representatives shall include up to one elected official who has served in that office for at least a year and up to two staff members who have assignments directly related to housing policy or housing initiatives. CLC member representatives may serve for unlimited terms. And further foreboding, coalition decisions shall be made by consensus, and there's only a vote and one voting member from each partner organization. If there isn't, they're not able to come to consensus. So that's, you wouldn't be able to have two elected members at the, at their meeting unless they change the bylaws and the changes to their bylaws require, and now I'm not going to be able to find it. Bylaws have to be changed by, I think it's actual, it's like a, I thought it said 75%, but now I can't find it. There's a threshold for changing the bylaws. Amendments, found it? Two-thirds majority of designated voting representatives. So the coalition's bylaws require that, which were voted on by the coalition, and it is its own separate entity. It isn't like a city-created entity. It's its own separate, to a degree, nonprofit. We are a perpetual partner because we were a founding member.
So Administrator Zalms, my understanding is that in addition to Councilmember Palmer, who is on the coalition as the council's representative, there is also two staff members that attend that? Is there an opportunity for another non-voting council member to attend those meetings?
Those are not meetings that multiple people attend. It is three, three representatives, two staff members, and only one elected official from each partner agency. So three, three attendees from each partner agency, two of which are staff members currently and likely for the perpetual future. That is Irene Woodward and Taryn Edens, who have a lot of knowledge, right, about how all of our different programs work and provide a lot of feedback during those meetings. And that is in accordance with the bylaws of the coalition. So in order to have another member, the coalition would have to change their bylaws. So you either have to request that they change it, see if they do, or not request that they change their bylaws. Or this is essentially a moot appointment, I guess I would.
Thank you, Administrator Zalms. Other thoughts on this piece? It is in our motion as alternate, Councilmember Doring, on the Housing Coalition. Councilmembers want to keep it in the motion? Councilmember Palmer, your light is not on. I mean, Councilmember Keane?
Again, I looked at this before when I was looking at how to adjust this, and I decided not to tackle this one. I looked at it more as this is almost like a mentor role and an educating thing, and I took it as fine the way it was. I didn't look at it as, you know, really the rules of the road and whether you could sit in the room. But I think the idea, I know Councilmember Doring has shown the most interest in getting involved in housing over time, and I think, I just would leave this. I think it communicates that, even though it doesn't end up getting him in the room with the, as part of the city's vote. So I think it's okay to leave it as it is.
Councilmember?
Yeah, I, thank you very much. I would, I share that viewpoint as well. I appreciate the clarification that, that we cannot have more than one elected official from city government there in the room, but I also view it as kind of a mentorship program, and that's, that's what I took the appointment from. I was just looking for that additional clarification.
Administrator Zalms?
Thank you. Council President, council members, Councilmember Doring, I also think, I mean, it would sort of indicate that if you were interested in attending the alliance meetings, which are more open and have any number of people that attend, that also, they're unrelated, those bylaws, and then the alliance. So I just want to, I get them confused sometimes, so I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. There is a motion on the floor to accept our amended, our amended motion with these changes that we've voted on. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item H3, which is the former F13, which is the contract with E Comply B2 Gong, for labor compliance and business diversity management software. And Councilmember Wall, you polled this item?
Yes, thank you. I am in support of the item, but I found in the cover page a lack of specificity in funding as we proposed moving to the new vendor. While the cover page indicates that the cost is similar year to year, I have found in information that I think all the council got before we got here tonight, that the cost has about doubled, but we're getting a great many more services as well. So I polled it so we could hear more about the change, its cost, and the benefits for our city.
Administrator Zalms, did you want to further, oh, I'm sorry?
I would like to encourage Director Motella to answer.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Wall, for your question. Council President, Mayor, rest of the council members, welcome, and thank you for being here. The question about this is specific to compliance software that we have utilized since we adopted goals. So for a little bit of context, all of our federally funded, state-funded, DMC-funded projects, as well as our capital improvement projects, all have goals in two specific areas. One is prevailing wage. Make sure we're in adherence to that. And then the other portion is specific to targeted business. Our old software, well, current software, which is LCP Tracker, only manages prevailing wage. And in that space, anytime prevailing wage numbers change, we have to enter those manually. We don't really have the option of the software inputting those automatically. What we are thinking about is the idea that we currently have up to about $200 million of projects in 2024. Our projections for 2025 are up to about $500 million of projects, with what I'm hearing, probably a little bit more than that. And so in order to streamline our processes and ensure that our compliance specialists are not spending an insurmountable amount of time working and entering this manually, as well as ensuring a little bit more accuracy in that. So the proposal that you have in front of you incorporates an additional software called B2G Now that is really specific to targeted business utilization. So being able to track WMBE and WDBE... So being able to track WMBE and WNDBE, um, utilization. What that means is our compliance, um, specialists won't have to enter and calculate all of those numbers by hand. Um, the new software also is seamless with our prime contractors. So prime contractors can enter their information, all of their prevailing wage numbers, as well as all of their WMBE and DBE certifications. The other thing that is really wonderful about the B2G Now software is it also includes a directory of all of the certified, um, DBEs. That is something that our prime contractors have been asking for, that they don't have access to now. And we typically spend a lot of time trying to find who is certified. So the cost that you're looking at is, um, hard to compare because we're moving from a software that only does one portion, which is prevailing wage, with a lot of, um, manual entry. And moving to a software that is paired, which is E Comply B2G Now, that incorporates both prevailing wage as well as targeted business utilization. And that is for $500 million, um, worth of projects. So it's really difficult to say, you know, are they exactly similar? Because one is offering a lot more enhancement, which, like I said, will increase efficiency as well as ensure that we're accurate, and we have to keep those compliance numbers accurate in order to kind of retain some of those dollars that we have been awarded. So please let me know if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Motella. Any, uh, other questions?
And I appreciate that, and I, I think that, uh, it sounds like, uh, we're getting very good bang for the buck. Uh, but it, it just costs more dollars, and I wanted that to be quite clear, that it's not similar to what we paid last year. We're getting, we need more, we're getting more.
Yes, and I will also add, Councilmember Wall, that, um, the charges or the cost for this is charged back to each project. And, you know, there's no impact to the tax levy, it's just the projects that are utilizing software.
Uh, any other, uh?
Just one.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Estimate on the man hours saved with the new software.
Um, that is hard to tell, but I can give you an estimate on how long it takes to enter prevailing wage just on one project. Approximately three hours of someone's time. If we were to have, um, LCP Tracker do it for us, they would charge us an additional $125 an hour to do that. Uh, the new software has an automation where nobody's manually entering any of that information. So I think it would be for the additional projects that we have, dollar amount, it would be hard to estimate how many hours, but it'd be a lot of hours saved.
That's, that was going to be my next question. How often do you have to do this, then?
Um, every time we have a new project that has compliance goals, which is all the time.
Got it.
Yes.
Other questions? Councilmember Wall, did you want to move the item?
I'll, I'll move the authorization of the contract with E Comply B2G Now in the amount of $69,276.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by, uh, Councilmember Wall and seconded by Councilmember Miller. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We are now, uh, I don't believe we have any council-initiated actions. We are going to move on to our ordinance first readings, uh, Mr. Spindler Craig.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor Norton. There is one first reading this evening, item J1. An ordinance annexing to the city of Rochester approximately 67.77 acres of land located north and east of the intersection of Eighteenth Avenue Northwest and Fifty-Fifth Street Northwest, identified by PIN number 084738, 057185, 058182, and 084739.
Thank you. A reminder to councilmembers that we do not vote on first readings, so we will move on to ordinance second readings, Mr. Spindler Craig.
Thank you, Council President. There are three second readings this evening, item K1. An ordinance annexing to the city of Rochester approximately 1.03 acres of land located 300 feet north of Wilder Road Northeast in the city of Rochester.
Move approval?
Second.
Uh, um, I'm sorry, I didn't catch who moved approval. Uh, it's a move to, to approve by Councilmember Keen and seconded by Councilmember Palmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Moving on.
Item K2, ordinance rezoning approximately 10 acres of land located on the south side of College View Road East, approximately 1,300 feet east of the College View Road Southeast intersection with East Circle Drive Southeast from R2 Low Density Residential Small Lot to R3 Medium Density Residential, and amending ordinance number 4478, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota.
Is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Palmer.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Keen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, any opposed, say nay. And we have K3, Mr. Spindler Craig, go ahead.
Item K3, a text amendment amending various areas of the Unified Development Code.
Is there a motion on this item? Moved by Councilmember Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Fredericks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And thank you, Mr. Spindler Craig. Uh, we do not have any table items, so we're going to move on to other business. And I believe Councilmember Miller has a, uh, topic, so Councilmember Miller, go, go ahead.
Thank you. I, so everyone should have received some context by email. Um, the reason for bringing it tonight is, one, there's a short application deadline window coming up. We will not have another regular meeting before then. But, uh, briefly, uh, Smart Growth America has a, an annual champions institute, which is composed of local elected officials working across the nation on a similar, um, group or theme of projects and technical assistance. And peer learning is the core portion of that program. The reason I'm interested in this, it, um, focuses on champions of complete streets, which we have a complete streets policy, but also looks at downtown revitalization, and particularly as we move into a period of intensive construction, business impacts, as we heard tonight from some speakers about concern about proactive plans that are, um, communicating pedestrian impacts, detours, et cetera. I think it's a great opportunity. And the other reasons I'm asking for approval are, one, that it will take a limited amount of staff time, perhaps slightly more than 30 minutes, just to complete the application, should everyone give their blessing. And then, two, 25% of the application score is based on demonstrated support from other community leaders and organizations, of which this body would be a strong indication of support. And so I would open to, be open to any questions or further clarification, but I would ask for your blessing, and I don't know that we need to take a vote on this, but I will defer.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Miller. Uh, any, uh, any thoughts from, uh, colleagues on, on this?
May I just add, there is no cost to the city. Um, this is a completely free program funded by the CDC, and so there would be no cost to the city of Rochester for that.
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Keen?
Yeah, again, these are a little, there's a little difference here. Sometimes we use council-initiated action to try to get some of these things done. Um, sometimes that, that, what we're really guarding against is any individual council member kind of bringing their own agendas to staff and working through things. Uh, in this case, I think staff was wise to say, like, we better not just help Councilmember Miller with this without that sort of consensus thing. As far as, um, the amount of resources or the sort of, like, uh, benefit to the city, it's unclear to me. But I would certainly support this as something that would, uh, be a potential benefit for insights into this council and for our city going forward. So I would support that sort of, as it's been scoped out here, that sort of work to help, uh, Councilmember Miller, bolster his application and, and get into this training.
Any other thoughts, uh, Councilmember Palmer?
Well, the, I don't know if I support it or not, but, but, you know, from a perspective that we've typically done in these meetings, is that you'd ask for CIA, and that would come and, and go through that process. And, you know, to say that it doesn't cost the city anything, we do have staff time, and I don't know how much staff time, so there is a cost to that. And we don't typically vote at other business, so I don't know if we're voting on this or not, so.
I did not anticipate a vote on this. I think we're, I think Councilmember Miller is just trying to get a sense of, of his colleagues and also be transparent about, uh, his interest in this, uh, educational opportunity. I guess, uh, uh, I don't know, Councilmember Miller or Administrator Zalms, you, uh, you mentioned less than 30 minutes of staff time. Is this an application that you yourself can fill out? I mean, do we even need that 30 minutes?
Great question, thank you. And, and thanks for the opportunity to clarify as well how this came to other business and not a CIA. I, I did take into, uh, I, I brought this up with Administrator Zalms. She recommended that I bring it to other business, given the short timing. It is an application that I can fill out myself, but I would need supporting information from the city, particularly about past funding from any CDC projects. And there are a couple of, um, requested high-level description of the community that would be easier to be requested of staff than me to create myself, and I think would be more accurate, coming from our official, um, language for some of these areas. It's a fairly short application.
Uh, Councilmember Palmer, go ahead.
Just to clarify, is it less than 30 minutes or more than 30 minutes?
Unclear, it might be slightly more, and so that would be the only.
That, that's the, the, that's the typical, to tip it into that. And I'm not, I'm not arguing whether or not this is good or not. I just want to make sure, policy-wise, we're following the same thing for everybody and, and not jumping the horse here, so.
Uh, Administrator Zalms, you had a point to add?
Uh, Council President Schubring, Councilmember Miller, Councilmember Palmer, I, I, it could be a little bit more than 30 minutes. Honestly, we've done so many grant applications that I think it would be similar information, and the form that I looked at didn't really allow, like, like, it's, you have to keep it pretty short. So I actually think that based on how we track all of the different projects that we've applied for funding for, it wouldn't take a significant amount of time. I don't know if that's 30 minutes, if that's an hour, but it felt important for there to be awareness, not just from the staff time amount, but that it was an application from the city or an elected official from the city. Um, so that was, you know, whether it's 30 minutes or 45 minutes or an hour, it was, from, from my perspective, that was why I thought it would be helpful for Councilmember Miller to get some consensus from the group. And also, there's a question that talks about support for the application.
Uh, Councilmember Wall, you had a point?
I am just impressed that, uh, new councilmember coming to his first meeting already has found some way to, uh, benefit the city by seeking out, uh, an item of interest in which you have passion. I'm in full-throated support.
Thank you, uh.
Yes.
Councilmember Fredericks?
Yeah, just for clarity, for, for me and anybody else that might be listening at this point, it doesn't look like many people are anymore, but anyway, uh, Councilmember Miller, what, is this just for city officials, is this for councilmen?
Uh, it's, it's slightly open for. It's, the cohort would be for local elected officials, and that could be defined a little bit more broadly than just city councilmembers. It could be tribal leaders, others, but it would be broadly elected officials.
Perfect.
Leaders in communities, it would not be, uh, regular, um, citizens of other communities.
And then what's the end game goal? What's the goal with it?
Uh, the goal is to bring, um, community, uh, leaders into.
For you, what's your goal with it?
My goal is to gain experience, understanding, a, a reference for national experts who will be presenters during this brief cohort from March to May. Also bringing up the ability to raise, um, unique concerns, particularly the city of Rochester and construction impacts and downtown revitalization planning and some of the projects we have on, but being able to effectively represent this ward, which intersects with, with downtown.
So did, what I'm hearing you say, correct me if I'm wrong, it's so you can navigate what we have in front of us here? You're looking for more tools to help navigate, um, your, your issues with accessibility and everything in, in your area?
Councilmember Miller, go ahead.
Thank you. I think it's a great opportunity to work in partnership with other local elected officials. Um, many cities deal with downtown revitalization, many cities deal with transportation networks, many cities deal with varying levels of construction, not exactly in the way that Rochester is. But I think it is a great opportunity to learn from and be in communication and conversation with national experts and other local elected officials to benefit from their experience, and also be able to gain direct access at no cost to the city from this application or program standpoint, um, to that information.
Thank you, Councilmember Miller. Um, now, I, I just want to say to my colleagues that, uh, the amount of time that we've spent talking about this is probably more than the 30 minutes that, and, and, uh, take into account the amount of staff that is in this room right now. So I would have to say that I am comfortable with, uh, one, I want to commend Councilmember Miller for his transparency in bringing this to us. And if, uh, Councilmember Palmer, if you're okay, if, uh, if we hear back on the amount of time that it takes staff to help with this application, and then we can assess that afterward. Does that work for you?
I support it right now.
Great, thank you. All right. And keep us informed, Councilmember Miller. Uh, uh, Councilmember Palmer, you have three topics on our first meeting, so.
I have six topics, I'm going to add three more.
Okay.
These are going to be kind of quick. Um, so what I like to do is suggest that we do a study sessions on, on a couple of different areas. And one of them is discuss the possibility of eliminating parking requirements for housing projects in the DMC area, having the staff come back with some suggestions. It's kind of picked up from last year, but we need to, we need to do this. And I like to have it done before the UDC. I don't know if there's a couple of people who'd be willing to have a, a study session on that.
Uh, councilmembers, what do you, what are your thoughts on a, a study session on, uh, exploring the, uh, the idea of eliminating parking requirements in the DMC? And did you mention UDC as well?
No, just the, just the DMC area.
That's, uh, Councilmember Miller, go ahead.
I, I'd definitely be in support of the topic. I'd, I'd wonder if we might broaden it just slightly to understand the impact of parking minimums generally and, uh, look to other cities and how they have looked at flexible parking policies as a start to housing generation and, and new housing starts. So I'd be in support of a, a broad topic like that in a study session. I think that'd be a great topic.
Good. Uh, I'm seeing some head nods here and head nods, and, uh, Councilmember Keen?
I just want to get an assessment from staff. I'm not sure if this is public works or community development. We've just gone through the UDC, we have parking, did a lot of changes. Is there something here that you see that's important for us to look at, or where are we at?
I, I think there was some discussion when we were updating the UDC in 2024. I think we've already placed, um, a request for a study session in June. I know there is also another discussion as it relates to utilizing parking ramps with, um, parking and transit, which is earlier before that. And we want to kind of use that information, and we'll also do some additional analysis and make this as part of, um, the UDC update for 2025. So this would be a part of that component, of being able to kind of walk through what do those recommendations look like for parking in the downtown and across the city.
Okay, so if I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's already part of what we have the work plan for 2025?
We've already, yes, that was part of it. We heard that there was some questions about that from 2024 UDC, and we've included that as part of the 2025 look at with the UDC as well.
Very good.
And we have a study session that we have requested.
Yeah. Does that work for you, Councilmember?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, moving on to, uh, consideration that only 200 new homes were built. Go ahead with your.
Number, number two, considering that only 200 new homes were built last year in the city of Rochester, what additional actions can the city take to achieve the Maxwell study goal of 1,000, um, new homes? And after I sent this, I thought about it, that we will have a Maxwell study update probably May? June? To us?
Um, the Maxwell study.
Excuse me, uh, wait, uh, did, Mayor, did, what do you? Okay, I'm just going to, and, and I know we're late at our first meeting, which is not actually that late, but I'm going to kind of be a little bit more, when we have these discussions, if you can please just direct to the chair of the meeting. It really helps with, uh, coordinating the discussions as we move forward. Think of your questions for staff or for applicants as helpful to the entire, uh, dais here. So just sort of bring it back, and rather than going back, and I'm not addressing you in particular, Councilmember Palmer, but just, let's just try to have a little bit more tightness to that if, if we can. So, Ms. Woodward.
Let me speak to that. I mean, I did send it to Ms. Zalms this morning, I did copy you on it, so.
Oh, oh, Councilmember Palmer, I'm not talking about, I, I am, you're, you're.
I'm not surprising you.
Yeah, you're not surprising me. It's not about the other business, it's about the dialogue on your other, on, on some of the other business that we've had here this evening, so it's a more general thought. So, Ms. Woodward, please go.
Uh, yes, so, um, the Maxwell study is being updated currently. We're expecting that first draft this spring. Um, so that is underway to update the recommendations and the estimates in terms of what housing, those needs are for the city of Rochester and the surrounding Olmsted County area. So that is underway, um, and once that study is complete, there will be additional information shared.
Perfect. Does that work for you, Councilmember? Okay, uh, number three, you said you have three more after these three?
The other three are really quick.
Okay.
Um, uh, what, what programs?
Have those, right?
Don't.
Okay, thank you. Get, do the three that I do know about.
The mayor wants to speak.
Mayor Norton, go ahead.
I, I just wanted, we had a chamber presentation this morning, and this issue came up at that presentation, and it was provided by the staff. And so we are currently in, uh, negotiations with 14 developers, which are in the works. Um, and those include 900 affordable housing units and 1,200 market rate homes. So we have in the pipes right this minute, 2,100. So we have in the pipes right this minute, 2,100 home possibilities being discussed. So that just happened to be my presentation this morning at the chamber, and I thought it, it definitely comes in line with the discussion. So that was it.
Thank you for sharing that, Mayor. Administrator Zelmus?
Council President, just to clarify that, that's just in the downtown DMC area.
Thank you for that clarification. So, Councilmember Palmer, did you discuss three?
No, number three...
Okay, go ahead.
Number three is, is, is an ongoing one of, what program suggestions can the City of Rochester implement for service workers to afford parking in city ramps downtown?
Staff, who would like to address this?
Yes, Council President, Mayor, Councilmember Palmer, council members. Currently, there's free parking in the evenings, in the evenings and on weekends, and the first hour is free. We also have monthly contract parking, which is at a discounted rate. We have meters on the periphery of the downtown area at 50 cents an hour for the full day, no time limit. We also have a few of our lots also at 50 cents for, and no time limit. Our rate study that was adopted by the council last year included some rate adjustments, which is implemented now. It did not include any subsidy for business employees. What the rate study also looked at was our budget, operations, and revenue, according to our debt service and our capital improvement projects program for the next two years. Based on that, with no, without any additional changes in our operations or revenue, we would be falling below our fund balance for parking. And so any subsidy that we want to provide in addition to what that rate study had made and, and adopted, we would need further direction from the council.
So council members, your other thoughts on Councilmember Palmer's suggestion here? Any thoughts at this time? Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, my one thought with these sort of things, and this is council, across a lot of different council things, we, we run these things like parking and transit as enterprise funds. And when the council tries to make initiatives to say, we got to spend their money differently with that, I worry that we are making those things that won't end up being able to be enterprise funds, and it'll fall back to taxpayers as we reduce costs for others. I would say that if this council, as a council, wants to subsidize parking for some, I think we should find some funding for that and come up with a way to do it, but not just say, we're going to try to give out these, these city amenities and still try to run things as, as enterprises, that, because I think they start falling back towards taxpayer and towards levy spending.
Any other thoughts on this one, Councilmember?
Okay. My last, my last one...
Oh, it's gone down from six to four. Thank you.
You made a suggestion. So when is study sessions going to be held in room 104?
Council President, Councilmember Palmer, fortunately, your next study session is a learning experience, and so it will be in 104. However, I would need to get an update from the team for where we are on all of the different upgrades for both this room. We did just replace in our streaming on cable, an additional cable box. And as a reminder, we have a rule currently that we have to not only stream, but also provide the cable feed out for any council meetings or study sessions. And that has been a challenge, in part because we don't just have our own equipment, we also rely on the cable company's box that they own and manage. And oftentimes, that box is the box that creates the problem, that either dais needs to be reset, and only they can do that. So I don't have a great answer for you, but I'd be happy to get back to the city council.
Just quickly, two things that, that's important, I think, is to sit around a table during the study session, so we can see eye to eye. It also sets a different agenda here. And maybe the, the, the idea is that maybe we should amend our, our rule that it doesn't have to be on cable, since now we have YouTube and we have other, other things. So there is a different, there is a different route to go. I don't know if everybody would be in agreement to look at that, but that's how I would...
Go ahead, Administrator Zelmus.
Council President, Councilmember Palmer, you are correct. That is an, it is a city council-initiated requirement. We did attempt to adjust that. That didn't end up changing. And if the city council generally would like for staff to bring something back, I would be happy to. I couldn't agree more that it is helpful to sit around a table when you are having a study session and not try to look at each other in a line, or even then go back and forth with staff who are trying to create dialogue, which was why we had brought that in the past. So if overall, there's not major objection to that, we can bring something back probably at your next city council meeting.
Sounds like there's something in the works. Good. Any other business for this evening's council meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Miller?
Seconded by Councilmember Fredericks. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.